Okay, welcome to the Bet2 Live Events Women Network sessions. This one's on gender dynamics. You're a sound engineer, if you get the pun. We're just gonna wait for people to come onto the call, so we're just gonna wait a few minutes and then we'll get started. So get your cup of tea, get ready, and we'll start in a minute. Okay, I think we'll get started. So for those of you that don't know me, my name's Naomi Taylor. I work with the trade union Bet2. We're a union that works with people who work in live events, but we also work with theatre, TV, film, art galleries. So it's quite broad cinemas, quite broad media and entertainment organisation. So today, we're gonna have a panel discussion about gender dynamics in the workplace with a focus on live events. I think that this is really quite an important sort of thing to start talking about, you know, the diversity that's in live events, because I think, you know, we all know that we could be doing a bit better. So I think it's really good to hear voices from a slightly different perspective from the norm. So today, we've got Miriam Walansky, who is the founder of Walansky's Pole and Aerial Fitness. Is general all round circus wonder. Rigor and also she's a freelance PD. And she's been involved in setting up the Scottish Live Events Network, which is the Bet2 branch in Scotland for live events, which is brand spanking new and has a brand spanking new logo. It's very exciting. So yes, we've also got Leila Oldtrember, who is, she is the head of lighting at Heaven, the venue in London. And she's also a freelance in-house lighting designer for the Shepherd's Bush Empire. She was used to work at the Astoria. And she's worked as a touring designer for people like Katie Tunstall, Backflashes, Zane Lowe. So, you know, pretty impressive stuff there. Then we've got Estella Adieri, who is, she's a sound engineer at DIY Space. She also plays bass guitar in the black feminist punk band Big Joni, which has performed with Bikini Kill, Gossips, Lita Kinney. I mean, I'm just, it makes me anxious just even thinking about it. But yes, so that's very impressive, but she's also been involved in organising with festivals like Decolonise Fest, Good Night Out Campaign and Girls Rock London. So I think lots, lots to unpack there. That would be really interesting. And then hosting today, we've got our very own Isabella Di Biassi and Elise Sav, who are from the London Union of Venue Technicians Branch of Bet2. So that covers all the technicians, the techies who are based in London who work in live events. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Isabella. But just to remind you, if you aren't a member of Bet2 already, I'm gonna pop in the chat the joining link. And if this is something that you want to get more involved with and you want to engage with your branch or set up a branch in your own area, please just join or drop me an email. I'll pop my email in the chat as well. And if you have any questions throughout, just pop them in the Q&amp;A box at the bottom. So I'll hand it over to Isabella.
Thank you, Naomi, for the introduction. And thanks to all the panelists for joining us today. We're gonna start straight away, because time is running fast. So today, we're gonna speak and have a conversation about gender dynamics. I think gender dynamics are present in all the aspects of society. But in this case, we're gonna analyse those gender dynamics from a working point of view. Because we are all, or at least we were all workers in the live events industry. And as workers, we want to analyse what's going on concerning and regarding the gender dynamics. And how we can, in a way, express what's going on and come out with some proposals to make it better or make it more, not say comfortable for us, but make it like, make working places like live events industry a better place for everybody. Let's start straight away with some topics. First of all, let's start with something that is usually a problem and a point from where we can actually analyse basic stuff. Like, for example, how are females, female workers or non-binary workers as well perceived from a working point of view? So for example, when you are a female worker in a male-dominated working place, like live industry, live events industry, you're perceived in a certain way. For example, you're considered like a groupie or you're considered like a person that is not strong enough to, for example, carry a box or to wire or connect a light or a bike. I'm the head of Sound Scala, and sometimes when people come in, and especially like two-way crews, they ask, oh, where's the head of sound? Where's the sound engineer? It's actually me. So the way people perceive a female working in a live event industry is really interesting. Usually, you're not perceived, you are completely, you're a ghost, basically. So how, what do you guys think? How you guys have been perceived in your working place? As first of all, as workers, and then since we got performers here and people like Leila working with very important performers like Katie Castell, how are they perceived in the live events industry? We can start with Estella, maybe?
Yeah, like, I think from my experience, the perception has always felt like your competency is something that has to be proven and demonstrated. It won't just be assumed, even though you've clearly said that you're there doing the engineering that night. It's not, you're not presumed to be able to do it sometimes. And that's what has kind of been the, yeah, the kind of experience that I've had in the past with like sound engineering, like maybe like an all-male band coming and not expecting to see a black woman behind the sound desk and things like that. And, yeah, especially in like certain genres as well, I guess. So yes, I guess from the beginning or from the outset, you're immediately might be challenging somebody's expectations in a way that they're not really used to. And, yeah, I guess from the performer side as well, probably like similar, to be honest. Like, you know, obviously before the pandemic, I was touring quite a lot with Big Joni. And we've had quite a few experiences of going into a venue and people not, and sometimes crew not expecting us to either like be good or be competent with our instruments, even though like it's not really a small venue we're playing. So we would have been invited there for a reason. So, yeah, for me, that's been like the recurring experience. And that was kind of when you were speaking before, Isabella, that was the kind of memories that were coming up for me.
So both as performers and workers, you find very, very similar reactions to your presence?
Yeah, it's kind of like an underestimation of what your ability would be. Or like a surprise that you're like able to do your job.
So true. What about you, Miriam?
Well, I'm about five foot nothing in height. So if I turn up to a venue and I'm seen to be unloading a van or whatever, I do tend to get the little head look up and down that says, there's no way you're carrying this. So for me, I'm a petite female, so that also doesn't sometimes serve well. It fits from being a performer and an artist's point of view. Because if you're flying about in the air, there's sort of this assumption too that you're a particular size or you have a particular physicality. So it will fit in that dimension. But when I turn up with my harness to rig a point or I'm the person flying the performer, you can sort of, it does mess with people's heads a fair bit, because it doesn't fit into that box in particular, between either being an artist and someone who rigs. But also both live events is largely male-dominated industry. But the rigging industry, I feel even more so, it is very, very dominant in terms of males and the numbers. And, yeah, that can be, that can be a bit of a query, because there's that, it's heavy work. It's laborious work, but it's work that I'm also capable of doing. So with what we've just mentioned, the competence needs to be proven a lot harder. And you can also sync that up just simply by the way men will talk to each other on the same topic. And then the way that they address you on a topic, you need to come forward a lot more to show what you can do. And I mean, after that, it tends to be completely fine. But it would be nice in the beginning to be asked or spoken to in a similar way, rather than sort of leading questions. It implies that they are unsure that you know actually what you're doing. And, yeah, so there's a lot of syncing up, just like we've discussed earlier, between being an artist and also a female worker. But for me, it's the gender dynamic comes into it. And also the physicality of me just being smaller also comes into it. So I've got a little bit extra fighting to do.
Yeah, so true. What about you, Leila? What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I have to say, I'm quite lucky. I've been quite lucky. I've worked in a lot of very inclusive venues. I've toured with some really amazing male and women. We've always been really strong as a team and that's really helped. But it's actually also shown up like how like just crass the contrast can be when like that acceptance isn't there. And, yeah, like much like Miriam, I've definitely also had to prove myself. And I feel like a lot of the time, not a lot of the time, but sometimes I definitely feel like people try to fog me off easier. They're just like, oh, no, no, actually, we never rehang these lights. And it's just like, well, that's not what it says in your rider. And that's not what we need as a production. So can we get it done? And they're just like, yeah, no, we don't go up ladders, which is a lot of the time resulted in me going up a ladder, working at height in a role where I'm actually a lighting designer rather than a technician, and sort of proving that it can be done. And sometimes doing a definitely two-person job now on my own with everyone going, oh, well done. And it's like, it's not, I don't need approval. I need you to help me when I ask you to, like you would do with other people. And that, I think there is definitely more of a, like with the female artists that I've worked with, as well as the female crew, that there's more of an assumption that if you say no a few times, we're just gonna go away. So I've had to dig my heels a lot in the ground. And actually, like, you know, sometimes when people, they, oh, there's the stigma of like women being difficult. It's like, I know I'm not difficult. As a matter of fact, I'm very happy to compromise a lot of the time. But there are certain things where I have learned that I need to stand my ground. And I will, basically, pretty much no matter what at that stage. And if that means that I have to do it myself, then I will do it myself. But luckily, I've also had some colleagues that have really stood in for me. And then sometimes as a unit, we show them that things can be done and things are expected to be done. And actually, sometimes in the past, I've also asked tour managers to go back to the crew and say that even though this time things got solved from our side, it's not really our role to. It should be like, you know, that maybe they can have a team, like work with their production team in-house to make sure that the next time support is more appropriate, basically.
Yeah, it's like what you were saying, Leila, is so important. I mean, it's just when you have a team that is actually supporting you, it's so much easier. But in the same, at the same time, the team is validating you as a professionist. And as, I mean, it's giving you like a passport of being there for a reason, et cetera, et cetera, which is again, really weird, because, I mean, in a way, the problem is not in our position, but the problem is there in other people's eyes. Because they, they have the problem with us, with us being there, with us asking them to do certain things or with us playing an instrument or something like that. It's peculiar that you're saying that, Leila, because you've been touring like forever now. So I wonder how it is hard sometimes for people like, I don't know, Elise, how many, how many years have you been doing sound, Elise?
Just for four years now. I've done like one tour so far.
Right.
I think I've, just because I've been mainly in, you know, small venues and around London, I think I've not had that much sort of that disbelief at me. It's usually really young bands. It's usually, you know, mixed gender bands. It's, you know, it's a bit more, they're used to it. There's other sound engineer, other female sound engineers around in most of the venues that I work at. But every now and then, there's like one or two experiences where there's like, did they just say that to me? You know, like, I'll be sitting literally behind the sound booth and so I'll be like, so where's the sound man? I'm just sitting here. Yeah, don't mind me. Cool. But, yeah, there's been, there's been a few times where it's just been like, I've mixed like a 14-piece band and they're like, oh, but we wish you should have, you know, smiled more or something like that. It's like, come on, guys. Like, that just kind of, I feel like I don't have that sight into a lot of things that people who have been working much longer than I have. And because it's been better as well. Like, I went in expecting a lot worse than it has been. But they're gonna, very, very best of the stick as well. But that doesn't mean that my perspective is like the perspective and like the things that I've heard from other, really, that's like, oh, this is still happening. This is still going on. And like, yeah, that's one of those.
Yeah, because the same situation happens either if you are like a newbie or medium experience or very experienced, like kind of, you know, very experienced or very professional working environment. So it tells you a lot of the condition of gender dynamics throughout the different working environments. This is a point that I wanna, that I wanna discuss with you. Because this is what men think about us, but what do we think about us? So what was your opinion, what are the differences and similarities of our work vision in contrast or in comparison to a male work vision, work perspective in live events industry? Leila?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think the best way of answering this question, really. I think, let me think for a moment. If you wouldn't mind going to someone else and I'll think of a better way to answer than my answer right now.
Whoever wants to answer?
I'll take, I'll take this then. So always, it depends on who you're working with. I've worked, I've worked with guys who are males that are, do have good work vision. But again, from an artist's point of view, but also someone who looks after their own production side. So for example, during festivals, I'll go in and we'll rig up an A-frame. And I'll also organise and choreograph a few different routines for the different artists. So I'll either watch their lines or I'll keep an eye on the A-frame. I'll also jump up and perform. So I'll do a few different things. And where I found typically, and every person that I've dealt with so far for organising in terms of the running of the festival has been male, I will in advance, months before, say, look, we've got these amount of artists coming in. They're going to do this. I'd like to have a chat about where your stage is going to be, where the music's coming from, do we need additional sounds? And if we are doing some rigging on stage, can we also have a bit of synergy to have a chat to whoever's organising your stage side, such as the trust and where the lighting will be hung? Because if we want to put a performer here, that will naturally affect the setup. Or if you've got something very specific on your stage, I need to know about it so that we can think how best to do this with the performer. Because that then also impacts on the artist. Because if they have to be moved to either side and we might have height restrictions, then that all comes into play for what they're doing on their specific aerial piece. And, you know, there's no point trying to plumb in a drop if you've only got three metres of fabric on the set. Or are there gonna be mic stands, all these kinds of things? And normally what happens is I get a, yeah, 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 we've handled this kind of thing before. We've dealt with it before. Let's have a chat. We've taken your points into consideration. And it never ever gets done. I'm still running around having to sort of, like almost make up a plan in my head that says I need a default Plan B, because they're telling me this will be organised and we'll have this line of communication. And it doesn't happen. And again, that idea of sometimes that unfortunate state of typical view that women can be difficult or a bit persistent, it's like, oh, it's still going on about this. I'm still going on about it because you've not spoke to me about the issue. And I also impacts my job with my artists, because I can't give them a very clear line of view, because I don't know what the setup. So we're almost having to create several different situations in building a routine based upon what the infrastructure is going to be and look like on the day. So I have to do more running around, more work, just so that I know that when they announce which company's done the performing, that this still looks good. But I am very much sometimes hindered, because I don't get all the information that I need in order to give it to the audience, to make it the best experience that they could possibly get, which benefits the entire festival or the gig and, you know, as a whole, that's what we all really want. That's why we're there, to put on the best, the best production that we can do. But a lot of the time, it's compromised, because there's not a clear line of communication. In contrast, if I deal with dance schools and dance shows, which that is mostly a female-dominated industry, we have a clearer line of communication, because we seem to, we share the same line in the sense of we need to pre-plan this. They're looking to do, they've got a, rather than more of it just being completely heavily technical, it's more of a, what is this vision supposed to look like? What is it that we're trying to make this look like to the audience? And then work back from there as opposed to these different segments. So there's the lights, there's the sounds, these companies are gonna do different things. I think it would warrant, if we could have that conversation earlier, to pull that forward.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it seems to me that, it seems to me, it's just my opinion, that sometimes women are programmed things in a more precise and very detailed way. And for example, when I mix monitors for a band, I tend to be very attentive to their like needs. For example, if an artist is asking for to double-check their level, I don't know, of the vocals in the monitors, I'm always really happy to go there and double-check. In a way, I'm requested to do that, because of course, as a woman, I always want to, to be attentive, but at the same time, I want to show that I can do the job. But if we go beyond this, it's like, do you think that this kind of sensitiveness, sensibility is what, is what isn't a characteristic of our work vision? Is it seen like in a bad way or in a good way?
I was just gonna say, I think actually, one of the things I know about myself is I think I'm a lot more transparent than perhaps some of the male crew that I work with. So I will sometimes quite often say, I don't know that. Which is all like, you know, or can you help me to do this? Because I've done it a couple of times, but I don't know that. And I think quite often that gets actually like put down as a sign of weakness. That be like, you know, that you're opening yourself up, while I actually think it makes it like transparency. Everyone knows where they're at, like, you know. And I'm also, I can, I'm equally transparent with what I'm willing to help with, what I'm willing to do and not do. And as Miriam was saying, I think sometimes of the prep things as well, I'm very careful that I prep things properly. So nothing can be sprung on me on the day. It's like, oh, well, you know, we didn't talk about that. Perhaps because sometimes I feel like, maybe, I'm like, I'm not quite as pushy about things. Just like, you know, sometimes on the day, because I want them prepped. So I can then do my best thing and the job can be the best. But I also, obviously, I expect for things to be there. But I know that sometimes I have found it more difficult to get information, so much so that I've actually, when I've prepped a few gigs, I've stopped putting my name underneath. And I've stopped using like, you know, like he or she sort of any pronouns. I'm just like sort of very neutral. And I find that sometimes actually I get a lot better responses. And I think one of my favourite examples actually of a sort of failed prep was we were touring with Katie Tunstall in the States, who were doing this run of small shows. And I was asking for a patch plan and the rig. And they just said, no, we haven't got one. And I said, like, look, anything, even if you just draw like a few doodles on a napkin, I just need to see a visual representation, anything. And I mean, literally, they just said, oh, don't worry about it. It's a natural amphitheatre, it's going to be beautiful. And none of us, the entire crew, male, female, production managers, like no one could get any information out of them. So when we turned up, the natural amphitheatre is basically a stage at the bottom of a small hill with things plugged in really badly. So it was an absolute nightmare. And it definitely proved one more time that, like, you know, you do have to just push people to the point where they basically tell you to F off if you don't get the information from them. Because otherwise, you're gonna have to probably take the fall for it. And on that occasion, I was up and down a million times the ladder. I ended up repatching, rehanging all the lights myself, because the guy just didn't know and he didn't say. And, I mean, it was actually, in the end, it was quite sweet, because during the show, he came up to Shondar House. And he thought that all the lights had to be all on the same channel, so all doing the same thing. And the whole rig was all doing a rainbow chase. And he literally said with tears in his eyes, I didn't know they could do that. And it's his setup. And no one had ever pushed him before. And he'd never thought to explore. So, you know, sometimes, yeah, it actually, in the end, it was good, because I think he learned a lot. He's not gonna treat other people that way again. He will hopefully be more transparent. But it was a tough learning curve for everyone involved on that one as well.
That's why I think that women's vision can actually add something very useful to a production or to our job. Because a lot of us have to, you know, work double and be a lot more precise and push certain buttons like Nida was saying and Miriam as well. So I think our vision can definitely bring something more to a production. I don't know. What do you guys think?
I'm quite interested in what Miriam mentioned earlier about the difference between seeing the show as a, like, as a whole. I'm quite interested in what Miriam mentioned earlier about the difference between seeing the show as a, like, as a whole, as opposed to the separate, or separating the spheres of what's happening. And yeah, I was trying to think if that was something I'd noticed as well. But yeah, I think it's quite a curious distinction.
Yeah, definitely. And as, as I add up sound, sometimes you have to, to be like Miriam and Stella and Nita were saying, on top of everything. So you have to supervise everybody and even the touring crew and your engineers, the venue managers. And I think women are really, really good at this job, in my opinion, maybe for nature or like kind of characteristic. I find it, when a woman is in, is in charge, I don't know, I feel more secure. But that, that's maybe because it's me. But I feel that everything is, is listed and is in, is actually worked and prepared in, in a detail, in a more detailed way. Of course, when you go into very professional working places, like maybe in TV and very big production, I guess things have to be prepared in a very detailed way. But if you think about the middle, like level of our industry, I, I experienced a better working environment from a work vision point of view, when a woman was in charge.
Can I ask a question to Estella? I just wondered, like, your work as an organiser on Decolonise Fest, I'm just wondering, have you found creating that space for people of colour, has that been something where you felt it's easier for people to express their vision? And it's easier to get things done and you don't have to, you don't have those issues as much? Or is, is that not the case? It's still the same problems?
I guess because of the way the organising team for the festival came together, and we've been quite good at kind of naturally having kind of a shared ethos and like a shared vision for what we want the festival to be, or at least like getting it all out in the open, what everybody's kind of ideas for the festival are. And then kind of compromising as best as we can to include as much as we can. And, and yeah, it's quite interesting because I don't think there's actually that many cis men involved in organising Decolonise Fest, like as the main kind of year-round organisers, just quite interesting. And, and yeah, I don't, I don't really know why, actually. It's quite a, and it's just like naturally quite a queer friendly space as well. So, but yeah, like we still have, like sometimes there's still like conflicts that need to be resolved and things. But as the years have gone on, we've got quite good at doing that kind of pre-planning that you've been talking about. Or like realising like, I mean, it was a, a year of planning before we did the first festival and stuff like that. And, and yeah, the kind of, it's all in the, the planning is what makes the festival. Like we couldn't really, we found we can't cut corners with that when you're doing like a live event like that, that has so many different facets. So, yeah, but I think especially with the first few organising meetings and kind of one of the main reasons that it's, while it's a festival that's open to everybody of any race or whatever, and the organising team is explicitly people of colour only. And people found that a comfortable space to kind of make analogous comments about how they've been treated in organising spaces where, again, maybe it's been assumed that they're not as competent as, like say, a white person with similar qualifications or whatever. And yeah, so to kind of, I guess similarly to this panel, have that separate space where you're maybe like free from a certain type of microaggression does have a positive impact on the work that you're then going on to do. I hope that was clear.
No, that's really, it's really interesting. That was, that was the thing that I was quite curious about with Decolonise Fest. I was like, oh, that sounds really, really interesting because it's sort of a rare, a rare occurrence. I was kind of curious about it. Sorry. Back, back to you, Isabella.
No, it's really, really interesting that when Estella was saying that, when you have the same kind of mindset, things are so much easier. That's when like actually the, the festival, the production and you're doing it, something then that will add a lot more. And I think even customers and punters will, will feel that when something is organised and, and people are on the same wave, on the same page. It is smoother, it's the, the actual like feeling is, is a lot more, it feels a lot more better than, than. I know that it seems like, oh yeah, in big production and festivals, how can you actually detect this kind of feeling that is underneath? But I think, I think you can always feel it. You can always like, as a punter, I mean, as a customer, but as a worker as well. So yes, that's really good. And yeah, I'd love to, to discuss with you now something about the negotiation power. Of course, when you are in, in a team, like we were saying, that has, wish everybody has the same mindset, even like the power relationship are quite clear. I'm, I'm doing this, you're doing that. And everybody has their own kind of focus on an aspect of the production or, or the job, let's say that. But we can always collaborate if somebody needs help. How do you find it? How, how do you find, in your specific job, how do you find this kind of power relationship or collaboration dynamics? Do you think you have to, do you think we have to improve this kind of relation? How can we improve to make it like, to make it the working place a better place?
I definitely think it's, sometimes it's quite easy to just be sort of like gone over. Like as you've said before, like sometimes assumptions are definitely something. And other countries, like, you know, I've had huge issues in, for example, Italy. So much so that, sorry, Isabella, but it's like, you know, it was just some of the crew, I was asking them to change over some lights for me. And literally the three house guys would turn around, have a chat among themselves. And then all in unison turn back around to me and go, no, no, we can't do that. And it's like, well, obviously you can because you've just discussed it at length. If it was just a straight up no, one of you would have just said no. So a few times I had to really, like really basically throw my toys out of the pram. And like, you know, get also tour managers involved, sometimes just getting someone, like, you know, another person, even though I shouldn't have to bring someone else in. I sometimes I have just done it also just, I think possibly to feel a bit more like someone can also maybe bring in some points that I don't make at that time. Because sometimes when you're easily getting dismissed, I know from myself, I have to be quite conscious that I then don't just also flip and just get angry because that doesn't, that's not productive. So it's sort of like working with what you have with the situation. And I think I've definitely, yeah, there were some pretty harsh limitations at times. We did Future Rocks with James Blake a few years ago, where I stepped in for like the absolutely amazing LD for a couple of nights. And we got to Future, like to the festival side and it was amazing. Everyone was really helpful. There were lots of crew, like there were lots of female crew, everything was done super fast. And then the next show was in Korea and basically they wouldn't talk to women. So I had two translators. I had one translate, like basically a female that was speaking female with me. And then the female would talk to the technical person. And the technical person would tell the board operator what it was put into the desk. So it was an absolute like, you know, what is it called? Like Chinese whispers. Sort of, so sometimes by the end of it, it was not actually what I was asking them at all anymore because it's, it's gone through three instances. So that was definitely a pretty hard lesson. But you know, we got there in the end, like I, I ended up simplifying everything like up to the basics and getting some basics into the board. And then basically at that point, I just said, everyone leave, I'm, I'm taking it from here. And I just run the basics that I had control over. So I think sometimes in moments like that is also sort of assessing what you can actually get control over. Because if someone will not talk to you, it's also because a cultural thing sometimes. It, it's no point just getting really upset and then still on pushing, pushing and not getting anywhere. So I worked out for me in my career that sometimes it's just simplifying, getting the things done that I need, really need to get done, prioritising, bringing other people in, ideally other females also to make a point. But if not possible, someone who can just be on my side and support me and will make sure that like basically it gets communicated that in this occasion, I am the person calling the shots for this show. And then basically just making it work. But there have been a few times where I cried into my pillow in the tour bus at home going like, why for fuck's sake would you not just listen? Please, you know? Yeah. Not always easy.
Yeah, no, and it sort of ties into with the, the pre, sort of pre-organisation of the festival work. Because you sort of have to go around in this really long loop just to get back to what you're originally there for in the first place. And it would save so much contention with everybody if you've got that clear line. And also more of a, a path, more peaceful, a more peaceful line as opposed to this sort of like aggravation for something. It's probably one of the key driving factors as to why I started my business so many years ago. Because I was just sick and tired of having to ask for permission. And not just ask for permission in the right channels, because there's some things you just have to do, no matter what, what your gender etcetera is. But just the extra additional work, it just seemed to be like one step forward, two steps back, one step forward, another two steps back. Because I'm just sick of this. If I'm in, if I'm one business, I can make more of my own calls and more of my own shots. And I can also bring in other people, men and women, into my circle and have a conversation about how we can make our own productions. Because you can't control everything out with your scope, you can try and influence that. But I can very much control what's within my, my smaller circle and hopefully that would resonate out. And we've had a really positive uptake in that, for example, a lot of our youth groups, in terms of numbers, we've got a higher uptake of female youths participating in the class. And so when I'm in and I may have to do a very small rig change, I get them involved in what I'm doing. They'll say, this is the type of knot that we'll use for this. This is how you can help me lower in the apparatus. Now there's a changeover, you're going to control the ropes here. And I started to teach them skills that you might not traditionally just get at a, a class. But I find that it's really good because those are young people who want to become performers. And we had a really horrible comment passed on in a theatre through in Glasgow, where one of the female artists walked on stage and she queried the rigger on set, who was male. And he said to her, I'm really sorry darling, but I don't know why you're questioning this. I've hung more expensive lights than you. And she just felt like our wee world just started to come in that bubble, but she was also so angry. But she couldn't verbalise her anger at that point because there's that moment where you're like, are they joking? Are they not joking? Should I take this to heart? Would I, by complaining, make this into something else? Also, you really don't want to annoy your rigger. So she had all of these things. So she was completely justified to be annoyed by that comment, but she was also a bit of an apprehension and a fear factor that was coming that then said, well, if there is contention with a couple of people on set, then it can again leach into your production and your show as a whole. And, you know, as somebody who's hanging around without a harness on a particular piece of kit, you just don't want all of that stuff going through your head. So I find that type of comment particularly upsetting and a lot of circus people shared the information. So they tend not to hire that specific rigger for performers. But it opened up a conversation that said, well, if you are on set and you do want to query your rigging, you're completely in your rights to because you should be made to feel safe. And so we've took that and then we've now said to our students, look, this is the kinds of things that you can be looking for. And if something that you don't, it could be completely justifiable, the type of thing that they've done. But if you want to ask a question, you should feel like you've got the ability to ask a question and not be terrified that, you know, if you put your hand up, I had to say that. Same even in arena rigging, and I'm fairly new still to, to that aspect for it, for live, live events. But I queried, carabiner's not, the screw gate's been left open. And the answer was, I'm not going to bother with this because it's a really lightweight curtain. Now, correct, it is a completely lightweight curtain, the amount of stuff you've got on there, the load would be fine. However, when you go through your training and the manufacturers say to you, you should be operating this piece of kit specifically like this. You shouldn't be take, it takes seconds to do. So that kind of thing where you want to ask questions, you're saying, right, okay, maybe. But also manufacturer says this, this is what you're taught in your training, why are we not doing it this way? And it's that very, like it's a very shouty knee-jerk reaction. And sometimes people afterwards will turn and say, oh, look, I just kind of meant this. But because you've queried and they're also in a position where they have other people around about them, they, they don't like that. And so, yeah, I, I feel like in terms of negotiation, having your, for me, having my own space and being in charge of my own thing, that was one of the reasons I needed to do it. Because it was becoming so tiresome and all just like so laborious and boring. And we're dealing with stuff that I shouldn't really need to do with. I mean, I'm having to continuously use more energy to prove a point to then get to the point where I need to do it. And in my experience, when I see other, when I see people in my possession who are male, they don't need to do that. So I have feel like you had, had a lot more answering to do. So in terms of negotiation, that's where I'm firing from.
Also, just, just to say from a union perspective, like if someone is being that way, I think it's always, well, I mean, maybe this is more just like general advice than actually union advice. But I think also, once the heat has gone out of the initial situation, I think if it's possible for someone to take that person aside, if that person isn't so awful and intimidating and terrible. But if they are someone who you can just take side and go, look, you know, that didn't make me feel good. You know, how do you, how would you feel if I, you know, spoke to you like that? Like you really made me feel like this big by calling me darling, like we're in a work environment. Like why would you, why do you think that's appropriate? We're not close buddies, like. And I think it's important to give that person a chance to see that it's not making you comfortable. Because I think it's always a good idea to give the person a chance. But I mean, obviously, you know, there are situations where, you know, they're just, they're not gonna learn. But I think also if, if you're in a situation where you're in a theatre with an HR department, even if you're a freelancer or if you're in a space where there is an HR department, or if there isn't, call the union, maybe we have a contact and we can give them a ring. I mean, if it's, there are things you can do. You can put in grievances and things if it's really particularly bad. And if it's really quite bad, it should be flagged, particularly if that person is on staff. So just to say, you know, that there's a balance to be struck between managing your personal dynamics with people. But also if it goes beyond and you think that's just gonna continue on and on and on with other people, you might want to think about how you could affect change in that space.
Yeah, definitely. I think the, the union as well, I mean, with all the kind of webinars and trainings that we do with the union, one of them was about, I think two weeks ago, assertiveness and how to actually deal with you being on a working place and having rights to, you know, do your job first of all. Because sometimes this kind of gender dynamics does, don't allow you to do your job properly, which is what really bothers me sometimes. And then, you know, learning to become more maybe assertive or dealing with. Um, dealing with this kind of problems, I think it's, it's fundamental. And I think it, it, it's a very good, uh, thing that we should all learn, maybe.
I think also sometimes it's quite easy to fall into a trap, because I think some of these things, which is why it's so important. As I know, we just said to point some of this out, is also a lot of people aren't even aware that they're doing it. I've been in places with like all male crew and I've known them. And they're, they're actually great, they're respecting me and all of this, but still it just slips out like. Whatever, a minute ago, they're just like, oh, Petal, where does this light go now? And like, you know, and sometimes I will say like, you know, guys, my name's Lila. And they're just like, oh, sorry. Or like, you know, sometimes it depends, sometimes I want to get them on site and from them on. All the burly guys on the crew are all blossom, like, you know, and they're sort of like, they swallow and they just get, like, it just makes them, I think, sometimes just making people aware. Of what they're actually doing. Because, you know, there are also some of these crew guys, they're actually quite genuinely, like, you know, it's, it's a turn of endearment and that it's lowering your respect. The people that perhaps don't know you in that situation, is sometimes they're not actually aware of it. So if you actually address it towards them. Whether you make a joke out of it or you just say like, look, it's actually, say this to me if you know me well. And I know it's a term of endearment, like, you know, basically also tell your guys. That it's like, just because you're doing it, because I know you, it's not an automatic, like, every go for everyone. Like, you know, I think some of those things, it's just really, it's just important to just sort of be an observer, like see the. Situation, like address it, talk to them about it and then like, you know, move on from there. Sometimes I've definitely also found. That I don't hold a grudge, I'll go back there, there are some crews in Newcastle that still call me Petal as soon as they see me there. Petal is back, but it's because now they know that I will carry my own trusses, I will carry my own lights. Like they will come to me, they will ask me for, like, you know, my help, my opinion, what do we do next? It's now, it's fine. So it's like, I think it's also important to sort of assess. The situation, like where's this actually coming from and where does it, also where does it go, I suppose?
Yeah, definitely. No, I, I do agree with you. Um, it, it's, I mean, i- in a way to. To do it, to, to say things and to interact, um, really teaches people how to actually interact. Because we are in a working place, so we are all in this together, we are a team and if the team. Is on the same wave, if everybody's in the same wave, it, things are so much smoother than, than if there are always. This kind of, um, like fights.
Um, yeah.
Say, Isabella, because there's like about six minutes left.
Okay.
We've got two questions in the chat.
Yeah.
That I thought I'd, I'd put to people. Um, the first one's quite, I mean. If, if anybody doesn't want to share an experience, that's fine, if you've got any comments on it, maybe this might be better, but, um. So we've got a question in the chat where it's, I've been offered work, but only if I did sexual favours. Even though I've run crews and have proven myself, I'm still seen as a sexual object. Has this happened to any of you? Now, obviously, if, if no one wants to get into personal experiences, that's fine, but if, if anyone's got any general comments. Um, firstly for me, I just that that's totally unacceptable. And if somebody is offering you work because of that, you turn around and you walk out the door. Uh, and also, you know, you call the union and we call. I mean, like.
Well, you call friends, some friends of yours that can.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is actually like, you know, this is actually teetering into criminal behaviour. You know, I think some people actually forget, like, sometimes you should call the police. Like, I, I would say like, if that's a situation, like maybe the police need to like knock on somebody's door. But I would also say, you know, there's, um, witness support as well. So if something like that happens to you and you're not sure if it's a criminal offence or not. Give them a ring too, but these are the kind of situations where. Do not work for these people, because if they're gonna do that, I think what, how much worse it's gonna be on the actual job. I mean, it's just, it's not worth it, it's just not worth it. But I don't know if anybody has any comments about that, um, in general.
Yeah, um, so not quite in the exact same vein, I mentioned that to Laura Mc- reply back, um, of. Being, oh, oh, you know, hired in if, if I did a, a, a sexual act or, or something, but. Innuendos, um, are galore and, uh, sometimes it can be quite har- hard to navigate also when someone's. Just trying to joke and obviously that sort of pleasing what Lila was saying, it depends on. I guess who, who the person is and have you just met them for the first time? Um, have you known them for years, all that kind of thing? So trying, trying to level out, but certainly if you don't know someone. And you're in a strange environment with lots of, uh, men that you don't know and those sort of comments start to happen, particularly if it's in a group. Then it starts to like resonate out, like everybody starts to sort of like filter in and chip in to the point where like, this is getting to be quite uncomfortable now. And for me, from the artist's point of view in particular, because I also do pole along with the aerial stuff. There's an extra sexual connotation there that says, you know, if you're, if you do pole in a circus environment, there's also that thing. Well, y- you must also, uh, be up for doing other things and then that starts to snowball. So then there's an assumption and a stereotype that if, if you do pole, you're also open to. To, um, other, other things that you just, when you think to, you're thinking, I quite like being on this, uh, piece of kit. And I've dedicated, you know, like most of my life into training, um, and that again sort of discredits what you. What you do, um. So yeah, for me in a personal experience, it, it, it comes into it, but it's, it's been more of a, an insinuations and innuendos. Um, that I've had to experience and a lot of comments and I, I guess rather than, I think to one point you also. Almost become numb, numb to it, so you start to just deflect it. Um. If something really bothers me, but if somebody says, I'll just say to them, could you not do that? Um, and it ta- I just get a quick apology and they, they do leave it, um. Or sometimes not anybody even saying something verbally, they actually, they get quite handsy. I've been in situations where I'm putting kit in and they've offered to help and you're like, hey, okay, you can help me take this stuff in, but then you get a hand on the shoulder. I've had a hand on my thigh, hand on the waist and you're like, I don't know you. And this is mentioned to physical contact that although it's not blatantly sexual, you're still sort of alluding to something and I, and I don't like it, so. And it takes a lot. I've had, uh, younger females on set who are maybe eighteen, nineteen. And they're sort of getting maybe, uh, messages straight away through Facebook chats and WhatsApp and different things through communication. And always if they've got a problem with it, the reply is also, I was just joking, it was just, you know, I was only kidding. But you're still making that person feel really uncomfortable.
Yeah, I think it, it is, you know, it, as a union official, the number of stories I get about things that people do. It just blows my mind. I'm like, it is a workplace, why would you do that? Um, but okay, we, we've not got a lot of time, so I'm just gonna power through. There's like two questions, uh, that we have, one in the chat and one in the Q and A. Um, so great advice from Lila about trying not to flip in, uh, those kinds of situations. When you're passionate about wanting the show to run at its very best, it can be so infuriating when you know your gender is holding you back. Does anyone have any advice on how to control that instant anger in those situations?
I mean, for me, a lot of the time was first of all to just get back into my body. Because a lot of the time when I get triggered like that, I'm just like, I'm immediately, it's all in the head and I'm just really like, you know, I'm rate. I've actually sacked the entire local crew on a gig before, because they made me so angry. And then I had to do the entire loadout myself with the crew going, why did you do that? And but it's just in that moment I had to really like, I had to be assertive and I needed to do that. But I've also learned that if you're not careful, you might shoot yourself in the foot and you'll have to do a whole loadout. So I would say. Definitely if someone triggers you, just either take yourself out of the equation for a minute, just whether you're saying you're going to the loo or it's just like. Go and take a breath, go somewhere, just have a minute to yourself, take some deep breath, come back into your body, actually think about what you. What you want them to do and then just go back, um, either maybe get someone who will help you be on site. With you to just like physically support you, maybe not even say anything, just a physical other presence, someone that's with you. And then just really clearly and sort of is. I suppose as neutral as possible, try and push your point, because sometimes the anger like. When I've like not managed it so well, it then, it just actually doesn't really, it, it doesn't serve anyone. It doesn't serve you and it probably also doesn't serve the production. It might get something done in the short run, but. You don't also don't want, you want people to work with you. So I think it's like, yeah, definitely. Like being assertive, also being allowed to be angry, that's cool, but like, you know, don't let the anger completely. Like basically drive your reaction, I think. Or anyway, I, I try and do that, it all, doesn't always work by all means. But I think it's like, yeah, that's it. Like, don't do that, don't do that.
Okay, so we had one, uh, we had one question, uh, oh. Yeah, I, I mean, Isabella's answered it in typing, but I mean, maybe we can answer it live as well. So, um, I often find that as the youngest woman in my workplace, I feel that I have to work twice as hard to prove myself. I'm often ignored due to my lack of knowledge and experience. Do you have any advice? I mean, I don't know, just Estella, do you wanna, do you have any comments on that one?
I guess, um, are they kind of talking about people? And is it again like an assumption that because they're younger and inexperienced that their. Input doesn't have value or had less value than others? Yeah, which seems kind of an unfair position to hold. I mean, obviously, and this person is there. Ready and willing to learn as well. And I think making it clear that, you know, you are. And there to take on board like other people's advice and knowledge, but also. That doesn't lessen the value of your own input or maybe your own fresh perspective, um, as well. And that, that should have just as much weight as, um, what other people have to say and. You know, we talked about transparency earlier as well and I think, um, this person being upfront and being like, well, yeah. There may be areas that I have less knowledge on, but that's what I'm here for. I don't see why their colleagues should be. Treating them as lesser for not having learned everything yet. So. So I don't know if that's particularly useful advice, but, um, yeah, they seem, I would say it's valid for them to be annoyed at. Their input being devalued in that way.
No, I think that's really useful.
It will get better, it will get better. Just need to keep, uh, plugging away. Um, and it is annoying, but if you're doing what you love, like just keep, keep at that. And it will, it will start to, to change, um, and we, you do meet nice people along the way and would, maybe this has been. It had, we're just gonna keep it like, a, a neutral thing is that you obviously get really good people to work with, males and females. Um, and then sometimes not, and you do need to prove yourself a wee bit more, um, but it will, a hundred percent, it will get better. The more that you start to move through it. So, yeah, keep going.
Okay, well, I think we're gonna have to wrap up, because we, we run over, but, um, just, I mean. Isabelle, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to say to sort of wrap up.
No, yeah, definitely. I mean, um, I just want to say first of all, thank you to all the panellists and all the very like. Useful information, seriously, because from the inexperienced point of view, but also from a kind of advice point of view. So thank you so much, guys. And I think the, the power is always in, in the unity, in the team. So, um, I think we should keep in, keep on doing this kind of conversations. Because we, we can always like, um, uh, you know, compare our experiences and our, our opinions, so. And please do, do get in touch with, uh, girls in rock, women in live music as well, soundgirls. There's so many Facebook groups in, in, on Facebook, of course, and then you can get.
Men's Network.
Was, I was, I was about to say that, so we got like a women's committee as well, so, um, please get in touch. And, and share with us your opinions, your problems and we, they're, they're, you know, let's keep in touch.
Okay, well, I will thank you to everyone. Um, it was really, really interesting to hear what you all have to say. And just to say to everybody, um, who's attended, you know, if you, these are the kinds, this is the kind of stuff. That unions are for. So if you want to get engaged, you want to do something about this, you know. Join, I mean, if you can't join now, because work's not happening, just bear it in mind for when work picks up. Join, find your branch or set one up if it doesn't exist in your area and get engaged and af- affect change. Because the, the union is basically a resource for you to use, it's yours. So, um, please, get, get to know us, get involved, um, and thank you so much again to our panel. So, um, goodbye everyone, I hope you all have a lovely day.
Thank you.